We'll send a cancellation.
Alrighty guys, moving on. What else do we have next on the agenda now? Nathan, do you have anything else on Conference Center? Alright, thanks for that outlook there. Next I have, and I saw him walk in, Mr. Bill Townsend. Welcome, Bill. How are you tonight, sir? Yes, come on up. I can just about bet where you have been.
My name's Bill Towson. I'm a representative of the volunteers at the Amtrak station. And I'm just here to thank the city of Jefferson, the council people, the mayor, the police department, and especially Britt Smith for supporting us and giving us help whenever we need it. This is a long time coming. We should've done it a long time ago, and I apologize. I'm sure most of you know about the volunteers. Last year, we had over fifty-one thousand in and out of the Jefferson City Station. And since we weren't being in August of oh-three, we've had over four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand passengers. So, a lot of those people are citizens of Jefferson City, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for us. That's about all I got to say, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Bill, I just wanted to say thank you. As you know, I find myself at the train station quite often anymore with Dad's Alzheimer's. Mom finds it easier to take the train to St. Louis and KC. And you guys just always do an excellent job, and on behalf of everyone, we really do appreciate what you guys do for our community. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Townsend? Bill, thanks again. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me time. Good night, folks.
Alright. Okay, next we have presentations from the gallery on specific bills. And I show Mr. Glenn Castalis, correct? Welcome, Glenn. And for the record, you have five minutes under number twelve.
You need to address and all that?
Sure.
Glenn Castalis, nineteen-oh-four V, Jefferson City. I want to talk to you guys about my opinion about the finance director position. A finance director is someone who oversees the finances of an organization. Someone who holds this position may also be described as the chief financial officer. His or her job is to make sure the finances are kept in order and to communicate information about financial issues to other members of the organization and to the general public. Finance directors manage financial risks, helping the people they work for invest wisely, managing their finances intelligently. They also deal with issues like long-term financial planning, financial record-keeping, budgeting, and issuing financial reports as required by convention or by law. The position of finance director is too important to be someone's additional duty. We, the citizens of the city of Jefferson, deserve a full-time finance director who is qualified for the recent job advertisement. I ask each of you, in your personal lives, did you, do you, or would you use the services of a trained and qualified financial advisor? Or would you rely on the advice of the counterperson at the cleaners, the waitress at the diner, or the furniture salesman? If you truly believe the best decision for the city is not to hire a qualified financial director, then please liquidate your personal investments and allow the same person to invest your money. Thank you. Any questions?
Glenn, thanks for coming tonight. Next I have Mr. Charles Gaskin. Good evening, Charles. Thanks for coming, Charles.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Charles Gaskin, two-six-oh-four, Twin Hills Road, Third Ward, Second Precinct. This is on, excuse me, this is on the finance director situation. Whenever I needed it, I referred to the Chicago-based Polina reports. Specifically, their report on the top ten pro-business states in this nation. Missouri, if you don't know or are aware of it, is ranked in the top ten of the nation for the past two years as being pro-business. Polina people are watching Jefferson City. Only located in Chicago, they probably get some of our news reports that don't affect the state, but they do affect the city and the county. And what has been reported in the newspaper here recently about our situation involving the finance director, to me, does not look very professional, and it doesn't look good. Sounds like we don't know what we're doing. I believe, when you have a deal with an organization like Polina, that this could affect our national ranking. And I'm dead serious about it. Now, I don't know, Mr. Betts, but I assume that anybody that makes ninety thousand dollars a year or over is very good for that job. Okay? So, I have nothing against him, but I do object to the fact of having two key departments in our city government that is run by one man. It's too big, it's too much, and it's too diverse. I'm a Navy veteran, and there was a time during my service when our national interests were being challenged. And as such, I was appointed to be a member of a flight crew, in which the number-one pilot was a Marine major, the number-two was a lieutenant commander, there was an aviation mechanic on that team, and me. What we had to do is we had to cross-train each other. And this became what is known as a combat air crew. I had to train the pilots and the mech on how to run my electronics. And the pilots taught me how to fly the aircraft. That meant that when I got done with my training, I had to be able to file a flight plan, to check the weather, and know the direction I'm going, so that the mission that we were gonna be assigned to had to be completed. There was no question about that. Okay? It had to be. The other part of it was that I had to take this training seriously enough that the people that on my team, my crew members, and the passengers if I were carrying them, had as much confidence in me to take this plane from point A to point B, complete the mission, and return safely to our base. There are no other options for that. The reason for this training is when you do combat air crews, because if any one of us was incapacitated, that mission will be completed. Will be completed safely, and we can bring people back home. So, what I see as a corollary to this with the finance director is that if you would find the best airport baggage handler in the nation and substitute him for one of us, you are not doing a service at all. The other point is, I believe that you are violating what are good standard practices and procedures based on the Human Resource Department. You're either gonna revisit those things because there's a problem, or you need to clean 'em up, based on what I see. In two thousand eleven, you know, I've spoken before, you folks, before, and I've cautioned you about some of this, but I'll tell you right now. In two thousand eleven, I honestly lost my confidence in you. On October one of two thousand twelve, I don't trust you. I hate to say this, but right now, I am embarrassed by you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on away from number twelve. I don't see anyone else signed up tonight. Mr. Gaskin, thanks again for being here. The consent agenda is number thirteen. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on, no bids tonight, over fifty thousand dollars. We'll go into bills introduced, twenty-twelve, one-thirty-five, Mr. Drew Hilbert.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson to allow elections in February and all other dates allowed in Missouri statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill is a result of last year, the state of Missouri eliminating the February election day, which is when we traditionally held our primary. And they did that in November. Because we frankly didn't have any choice, we set our primaries on March in this year. And there's a problem with March being the primary day, primarily because it doesn't give us as much time to get our absentee ballots out. Mr. Register can't print those ballots until after the conclusion of the March election, which doesn't leave a whole lot of time before April. So, we've got a couple of options, and we discussed this in previous years, or I guess in November and December, and decided to see how this went, and now we're at the decision time again, I suppose. One option is to change our charter to allow for a February election, and that is in part what this bill would do. This bill would establish a February election day, which would then be available for our primary days. And what I really like about it is potentially for an annexation day. If you don't have February and April for an annexation, then the only dates you have available are August and November. And typically, we don't have any other August and November elections. So, our problem is if we do an annexation, we're stuck with two days that we're gonna hold an election for, for single issues, probably. So, and what we've done with this particular ordinance is to specifically list all the dates that are currently on the chart, in the statutes, and then also say any other dates available. So, in case this happens again, where the state legislature says you can't have a March election unless it's specifically in your charter, we'll have that covered. I will tell you, it's not, I guess I and all the other city attorneys I've talked to all agree with the interpretation that the statute would allow this. The Secretary of State, I think, is of the opinion, I think Marvin Register talked to him, and they're of the opinion that you can't have a February election for anything but a bond election. I don't agree with that. My fellow attorneys don't agree with it, so I can't say it's a done deal. Councilwoman Carol had asked what other cities had been doing. I did a little research on it. Columbia, Springfield, Joplin, and University City have all, at some point in time, eliminated their primary. Cape, St. Joe, St. Charles, and Independence already have February listed in their primary. So, if the Secretary of State is correct that you can't have February primaries, then all these cities are in big trouble. I know that Springfield only recently eliminated their primaries, so I guess I'll save the other part for the rest. So, let's bring this back around. If you pass this bill, it would propose a change to the charter to go on an August election day, which would allow, which would add February to our potential election days. So, that's all this bill actually does, but in effect, it also would allow you to keep your primaries in February. And I kinda went long about that. I'm glad to answer any specific questions.
And also, it would allow us to address annexations?
I believe that it would, correct.
Would you would, because you go February, April?
Yes. You could put forward this bill and the next bill, if you wanted to, and not be in conflict.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about the other bill first, or go ahead, Bob? I'm sorry. We'll do it.
I'm just gonna ask. You mentioned that the Secretary of State had advised that this, that in their opinion, you could only hold bond elections in February. Do you think there's any chance that if we put this on the ballot and it were to pass, that the Secretary of State might try to force us to rescind it, or somehow challenge it, court challenge, or something like that?
Well, it would happen probably in the reverse. If we pass this and then put our primary on the February election day, then Marvin might say, "I'm not gonna do that because I don't think the Secretary of State allows me to." We would then have to file suit for writ of mandamus, and the Secretary of State might be in that suit, and then the court would have to decide who's right. And I'll just tell you now why I think it is what it is. The section says that you can have any election day, they list these election days, or any election day written in your charter. And then it goes on to say, if a bond, if a bond election appears on February, it can be the only issue in February. So, the Secretary of State's saying that means only bond issues can be on February. But I think if you read it literally, all it's saying is, if you have a bond election, that's all you can have. So, we wouldn't be able to have annexation primary and a bond, but if we just had the annexation and the primary, we could do it. So, I guess what I'd say is, when you all, if this, if this goes to the electorate and they pass it, and you decide you wanna have the primary in February next year, once you pass that, I'm sure we'll get a response from Marvin's office, and then we get that litigation started sooner or later. I'm not suggesting Marvin wants litigation at all, but that's just the nature of how this works.
If I can follow up. If I understood you correctly, I think you just said that if you have a bond issue, it can only be held in February.
If I said I misstated. If you have a bond election, election in February, that's all that can be on the February ballot. I think the concern, part of the concern for this was that cities were slipping by issues in a February day because it was such a low turnout. But they conceded to the, I think the school folks, that said, "Well, we may need a bond issue," and so they allowed bond issue only.
So, if, if we did establish February as our primary date, then that would preclude us from ever having a bond issue in February?
Yep. Well, if you were holding a primary, yes, you could not have a bond issue in February.
I presume if we, if we establish February as our primary date, then that'll be, that'll remain the date for primaries. And just for those at home, you've explained this to us before, but the reason that February is a desirable date is because it allows us to have our absentee ballots, and to get ballots printed, and all that sort of thing. It allows time enough between the two elections to do those things.
Correct. March just turns out not to be very good, because until the election results are certified in March, you know, Marvin or whoever succeeds him in office someday, has to get those ballots, you know, immediately out, because you're already in the absentee ballot season by, at that point, for, for April.
And of course, it's not an issue if we were to decide not to have a primary, then, then whether you have that date or not.
Yeah.
Other than it's just convenient, maybe to use it for some other election, like, as you said, annexation or something.
Yeah, and maybe I probably owe you a little clarification, at least who's ever watching this. The annexation law says, you know, the first election, you decide the area and the city vote independently. In the second, second election, if it doesn't pass in the first election, you vote together. And you have to have those elections within a certain timeframe. And so, right now, the only timeframe available to us is August and November. But it could be February and April if we have the February election available to us. And I need also throw out one of the things that although this bill, well, this bill would cost us an August election, which we're not currently expecting to have. So, you know, if it's the average cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars, this would require some additional money from somewhere in August.
Any other follow-up? Oh, Dr. Pope?
Drew, so do we have a written opinion from Secretary of State that, or is this general knowledge?
Second-hand from Marvin. He took the occasion to call him and ask him.
Okay, and the Secretary of State's office, like some of the others, will, will the Attorney General's office deal with this case?
I would imagine so.
Okay. Would it be possible to get a follow-up about how they would proceed?
I could certainly inquire.
I mean, if we know how they're gonna proceed between now and next week?
I can certainly ask. There's no harm in that. I could maybe give you an answer in two weeks. They may just take the route of saying we don't speculate on litigation, but who knows? They might. Yeah, if the Secretary, the Secretary of State have their own counsel. Nathan's nodding at me like...
Well, they do, but I suspect if it played out the way that you're talking, where the city had to sue Mr. Register for mandamus, which is not a personal suit, but just a...
Do you wanna explain what that means?
Writ of mandamus is a legal action to compel a government official to perform his clearly established duty.
And it hinges on whether that duty is clearly established or not. And in those kind of cases, the Secretary of State would not defend.
I don't know.
They might intervene.
Well, intervention is what I meant, but I think Dr. Pope's question is still valid.
Which is sort of awkward.
Yeah. It would be. I was just anticipating they might get involved, but I could still inquire, is the question, what would they do? Marvin. But he would be doing it just because he believes his duty requires it, not because he holds personal grudges against February elections or something. Right.
Go ahead, or we'll move on.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, the problem is that all of us, and Mr. Register included, are in a no-win situation because of this statute. If, if we have a primary, the only time we can have a primary now is in March, and if we do it in March, we're essentially disenfranchising some of the voters, because the absentee voters will not be able, or may not be able to vote. Or, we can, we can, we can go the other way, and, you know, in which case, we may get sued, you know, by the Secretary of State's office. So, it's, it's a no-win situation for the city.
I guess we could also hold it in November, but, you know, six months between a primary and a general seems absurd.
Mr. Weber? Yes, please. You could, you could come to the podium, sir. As you're doing that, Mr. Weber had his hand up. Are you wanna hear what Marvin's got?
Does the charter call out that we have to have the April general election for office? Could we do a March, August? March primary, August general?
Suppose that you could. The state law calls for general elections in, in April, though. It calls, it calls it the general election day for, I forgot what it's called now, local government or something along those lines. So, the answer is maybe, but it certainly wouldn't be what the statute probably calls for. I'd have to look into it, I guess.
The clerks, this right-hand side, this clerk's saying no. This one, too. Mr. Register.
We yield to her.
I'm saying no.
Our county clerk. Welcome, sir. Good seeing you.
Mr. Mayor, because based on what the Secretary of State told me, the law was changed last year under House Bill ten thirty-six. And that's where the change comes in at. So, that's where the statute's changed. There are statute that, and it's not only here, but if you, right now, in the House, there is a bill that wants to change the presidential preference primary from February to March. It doesn't work for any of us because of the fact that when you have a March primary or a March election, we're, we can't, like Drew said, I can't print the ballots yet. There's no way. Absentees should most probably start next week for the April election. It's not going to. Because I won't have a ballot or anything until March the seventh. I say, yeah, seventh, because I have to take the computer packs to Springfield, have them programmed, and also, I'm gonna wait while they test them and print the ballots, so I can bring back absentee ballots, so we can start voting on the ninth, I think it is. I'd have to look at my calendar, but it's somewhere like next March, the first Friday in March before you're gonna see a primary, an absentee ballot printed, or even voting. So, you know, I can give you all a suggestion of what I think you should do. And basically, you could save the city money and everybody by reducing, I don't know if you can change your ordinance, but what you should do is make it an April election, no matter how many people run, the number, whoever has the most votes, that's the person that wins that election. Because you're sharing in the April cost with all the other municipalities. If you're running February, you're paying the whole bill. March, this March election's gonna cost you somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars. For this one.
March. And, and I think we just have one primary, right, in one ward? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that, that one ward...
Is gonna cost you somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars.
So, one-fifth of our city is gonna cost eight to ten thousand dollars.
Yes. By the time we get through with our person, I'm splitting, to save you money, I'm taking my poll workers and having them work half-days and split it, so we can save some money. But the ballots are right, you know, getting what I get printed. It's gonna, I figured out the other day, it's gonna be close to eight thousand dollars somewhere.
Marvin, let me ask you this. What you said about an April, and only having an April election, how many other cities, Drew, could you, I mean, we're just really in the discussion phase tonight, but could you look into that and let us know?
I think that...
How it works in other towns? I'd just like to kinda see the overall look.
I think you're looking, you're looking at Mr. Mayor. Sorry. I've known, I've known the mayor since he was about that high.
You could call me Eric. Marvin used to be my first-grade baseball coach.
No, ninth, ninth, when you were nine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I've known Eric.
And I was in first grade, on his face.
I could tell you some stories, but we won't get into that. But if you did a February election, you're gonna share the cost. Any February, if you do February elections, and I'm most probably, like Drew says, I'm gonna tell you no, because the Secretary of State says no. So, we're most probably gonna wind in court, you know. I've been sued before, so I don't look at it personally. But it's gonna happen, because I'm gonna go by what the statutes say, and that's what's gonna happen. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna see it happen, but it will. And it's, until we change it, until we do something, we're gonna have this every year. And if we get into this in the presidential primary, and they do change that, it's even gonna be worse. And I'm hoping that the legislators know that they cannot move it to a March election, because if they do, it's even gonna, like I said, it'll, it'll mess us up in April completely, or they're gonna have to move the April election or something, because there's no way we can do a presidential preference in March.
Okay. Any other questions for Marvin or Drew on twenty-twelve, one-thirty-five? Carrie?
Thank you. And I'm the sponsor of both bills. This came through the Administration Committee, which is how I'm the sponsor. And I would be open to modifying or making changes, whatever the council would want to do, and also with Marvin's suggestions. We are faced with something that we really can't change. We're trying to make some changes, but I agree, we need to go with what's before us, what the legislators have given us to deal with. So, I would like to see it changed to eliminate the primary. But my question, too, is, I know, like Drew said, we have it on, we have this amendment to the August ballot. And that's also a cost, you just said, that's gonna be an additional cost. So, is there a way we could put this on November, let's say, or the next ballot? Now, the only problem with that is it affects the spring, like we wouldn't have the time if we waited till November. So, is there a way to do that, but also be prepared for the spring without having the additional cost?
You wanna, you wanna stay away from November at all possible, because when you run into the presidential primary, I mean, the presidential election, that's the most expensive election there is.
So, even though there is not a presidential...
There's no, you're gonna share, the only cost you're gonna share that with is gonna be the county. And if you asked your clerk, she'll tell you what your bill was for November, and it's very expensive.
In this coming August, correct?
Well, I think...
Well, August won't be that bad, because, and this coming August, or the off-year, it's not, this year's not gonna be that bad. But you're gonna have the expense, because it's gonna be, the city's gonna pay the whole bill again. Because you don't have anybody else, unless somebody else comes out with something to put on the ballot, you're paying the whole bill.
Drew?
I think Carrie's question was kind of about this November, if we put it on this November. But I think if we did it this November, our problem would be that if you did the February thing, you'd still be too late. So, you really need to have this particular issue decided in August to clear up for, to clear up next year. Is that what that?
Right. I'm just talking about this.
This current issue.
This common one.
We're incurring then...
You're not gonna save any money in November.
But then if you set it in November, you're gonna have to do it in November from then on.
No, no. Marvin, she just means this particular issue, either eliminating the primary, or... And the, and another potential problem is if the electorate doesn't pass one of these two possible solutions, you know, then either we're stuck in March, or maybe something will come available that we could stick on the November election.
Drew, something that the clerks tell me is that if you have this in November, you're actually going to miss the April final period. Is that correct?
Right. That's why we gotta do it in August.
Okay.
Rather than put it off till November.
Okay.
And the other thing I'll just mention is eliminating the primaries of the next bill.
Okay. Alright. Anything else on twenty-twelve, one-thirty-five? Thank you, Mr. Register. Tell Barbara I said hi. Next we'll have first reading of twenty-twelve, one-thirty-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson to eliminate primary elections.
Alright, I won't rehash all that history, but what this bill does, what Marvin just suggested, which is, would eliminate the primary altogether. It would then create a winner-take-all situation. If there's three candidates, the candidate with the highest vote wins. It would, it would not require someone to get fifty-one percent of the votes cast. I think ultimately, this is a difficult political decision for you guys, because you're changing really the way the election's run. The staff would go ahead and be in favor of, of doing this, because it does save you the money of the election. And it also, in the history since the change in the charter from political parties in two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, every person who won the, who got the most votes in the primary, won the general. Now, that's not, you know, a guarantee that could, it would always turn out that way, but it's the history of what we have. And, uh, it, it solves the problem with the primary and the available election days. As I said before, you can move forward with both bills and be okay.
Uh, question for Drew, uh, Mr. Bright.
Drew, do you know how long we've been having primary elections? Let me, apparently, we've been having primary elections up for, uh, uh, just for, maybe just for a short period. There's been a lot of talk about the charter, so I, I just ran across this, uh, looking up some other stuff too, and the Bill 136 is to eliminate primary elections. But according to this, the thirteenth, thirteenth, that the charter's been changed fourteen times. And the thirteenth change was to establish a primary election.
Yeah, the, that was one of our recent changes. The primary goes back to the original charter.
Okay, so there's-
Because they had parties. That changed, uh, now I'm trying to remember what that was.
It was, it was an error in the charter that said that the primary would take place when there were less-
Yeah, that's right. When there were two or more candidates.
Two or more candidates.
And it should've said more than two. So that was that change.
All right.
But it, it at least goes back to eighty-six, eighty, whenever the charter was adopted, because that time, political parties had runoff, which makes sense. You know, one Republican, one Democrat, but now that we're out of parties, it doesn't seem offensive to have a winner-take-all.
Okay, I under, I understand that now, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Drew on 2012-136? Carrie?
I guess I have more of a comment than a question, I'm not sure, but this, when these two bills came out of admin, um, we felt like getting them both out there allows the public to have a voice and a say, because we are talking about the charter and that makes sense. And now, sitting here after talking and listening to Marvin and, and the discussion, I wonder if, if that is the best way to go, or if it's best to present to the voters what's truly going to be acceptable by the law. I mean, we are faced with what the legislators have given us, it's not the best option. But I hate to put something out there on the ballot that isn't gonna hold up in court anyway, that is gonna face potential litigation, that doesn't make sense. And, uh, two, to have two things on the ballot, I, I think we're having the confusion of people saying, am I gonna vote yes, no, 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 yes, yes? Uh, I almost feel like one solid, um, bill is the best way to go, to say eliminate the, uh, eliminate the primary, combine them into one and use Marvin's suggestion, and I don't know if tonight's the appropriate time. I know we are on a deadline if we wanna get it on August, so, uh, I know this isn't probably the appropriate time to, to rewrite this ordinance or combine them.
Oh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to tonight, Carrie, because we're just introducing it for the first time, and we have another couple of weeks. I guess if we wanted to do a substitute, Drew, could we do that?
Sure, yeah.
In the next couple of weeks, and-
Can I respond, I guess?
Yeah, go ahead.
And part of the confusion, I think, is when I presented it at admin, I was thinking of it as an either-or. Then I got to looking at it, and I realized you could still add February as an, as a available election day and, and eliminate the primary. So if you eliminate the primary, the February election day is just available if it turns out it's available. You could move both these forward and not be inconsistent. But if, if the folks passed, allowed you to have a February election, but refused to eliminate the primary, well, then you've got your solution, flawed as it may be.
And then the primary would still be in February.
Probably, the council could set it on February, and we'd find out what happens from there.
Okay, Carrie?
Why would we wanna send out a flawed, potentially flawed, um, outcome?
Well, uh, I guess, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily agree that it's flawed, but, you know, obviously, we're gonna disagree. What, what, all the first bill does is, is make available the February election day, it doesn't actually say your primary will be on the February election day. So I don't see that with being inconsistent with, uh, eliminating the primary, but, you know, you guys are better judge of what, how the public would understand the two bills together than I am. So we, I can certainly, if somebody wants to do a substitute, I'll, we'll go ahead and prepare it.
Okay.
If you established it, uh, you could use it if for no other reason than for a bond election, because, uh, Secretary of State said that a bond election in February is fine.
That's true.
And the, uh, the other, uh, issue is if, if you, uh, or the other question is if you did, let's just say that we put this to the voters, because that's really what we're voting on.
Right.
We're not voting to establish it, we're voting to put it to the voters. But if we did put the issue to the voters and they agreed to have the election date available, and then we decided to set, because I assume we would have to set an election for that date and go through that process.
Yes.
And have it turned down, and then have it, uh, defeated, if you will. What happens then if, if you have established the fact you're gonna have a primary, and then you, I don't know what period of time it would, would, uh, the litigation over what period of time it would occur, but let's say it occurred over two or three months' time, you're planning on having a primary, but then you can't. What, do you still have time for a remedy, or what, uh, are you left up the creek without a paddle?
Well, that would be difficult, you'd have to get the court to, uh, deal with it quickly, or you'd have to amend your plans for the, the ballot, for sure. I would suggest that it's, it's a not particularly complicated issue, it's just the judge is gonna have to make a decision now. And what would happen is the judge would rule one way or the other. If he ruled in favor of us, maybe the opposing side would take that up on appeal, but it would still, we'd still get that election day. If the court ruled against us, and we wanna take it up on appeal, then yeah, we'd have to come back and, and change some, so that's a risk. I guess, you, you know, you'd rather risk it on something a little less, uh, you know, you do an annexation vote the first time.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Drew on 136? Okay, we'll hear more about that in the future. Uh, first reading of 2012-137, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a parking lease agreement with Welcome In Again LLC for the lease of the parking lot known as Lot 31.
Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is to enter into an agreement with, uh, a group called Welcome In Again. They want to open that restaurant, and they are looking for parking for their employees and patrons. The city owns a parking lot there at the corner of Madison and, and East Atchison. Uh, they've approached us and have offered to lease the entire, uh, lot, and this agreement would allow us to move forward with that.
Any questions for, uh, Roger on 137? Dr. Pope?
Roger, how many spaces in that lot?
There's thirty-two today.
All right, any other questions? Uh, I'm sorry, I was gonna call you doctor, Mr. Lubert.
Would they expect this to be exclusive, or will it be open, or what, uh, how are they gonna deal with that?
Uh, actually, I had somebody else call me just last week asking for the same thing. And I told him that this bill was gonna be introduced this evening, and, and encouraged them to contact, uh, the folks from Welcome In Again whom they know. Uh, and they were gonna see if they could work something out. Uh, but right now, it would be exclusive.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go into first reading of 2012-138.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way on Morris Avenue and Elizabeth Street.
Mr. Schwartz?
Again, this bill, uh, would eliminate some right-of-way, uh, off of, uh, Myrtle Avenue. Uh, we've had a request from, uh, Helius, they would like to consider an expansion in this area. This is something that was platted many years ago, the city doesn't have any intention of building a street through this area. Uh, the adjacent property owner is the Housing Authority, and they are in agreement with the vacation of this right-of-way. Um, so, uh, staffs reviewed this and, and would recommend approval.
All right, any questions for Roger on, uh, 138? Seeing none, we'll move into first reading of 139, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule W Snow Routes of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to various streets in Jefferson City.
Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're gonna be bringing up a map here to show you. Uh, we looked at the ordinance that has to do with snow routes, and when we talk about a snow route, we're talking about, uh, those routes that are our first priority for clearing, for snow removal. So you want these to be the most important routes in the city that, uh, people use the most often, and, and, uh, when we looked at it, it has not been updated since nineteen eighty-seven. And obviously, the city has changed a great deal since then, we've annexed a lot of area, we've built new streets. And what you see before you is the green lines are the existing snow routes on the map, and the blue lines are those routes that we proposed to add. Uh, you can see there are quite a few on the western side, and, and even on the eastern side, where there's some annexation that has occurred. Uh, and we have a substitute bill that we would like to offer up, uh, on this one, that, to add a couple of more routes that staff found after, uh, we were reviewing this, that we would like to add.
Go ahead, Roger.
Mr. Mayor, as, as sponsor of the original bill, I would offer up the substitute bill to be introduced tonight, if, if we could vote on that.
Uh, anyone have a problem with the substitute being brought up tonight with two extra streets? Seeing none, uh, all in favor, say, oh, hope we need a second, sorry. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Bob. Roger, back to you.
Okay, the additional streets that, uh, what we did was staff started looking at this further, and, uh, with all the departments, and, uh, tried to match up our bus routes to these as well. Uh, and as a result, we would also like to, uh, recommend adding Bel Air, and it's Bald Hill over on the east side, and then the combination of Veeth Drive and Satinwood, uh, would be the third, uh, route that we would propose to add to this. Uh, when you look at this, uh, our staff, we have twenty-four snowplow trucks that operate in our city, and they're assigned areas. So basically, what they would do is they would start on these priority routes first and plow them before they would start on any of the other, uh, streets within the city.
Any questions for Roger? Mr. Lubert?
As I understand this, this just sets the priority that your folks use for plowing, it does not provide any restrictions on the public for parking or use of the streets.
No, it does not, it's, it's just our priority, uh, where we start first, and, uh, and the way we operate is if you have a small snowstorm, we're gonna hit these routes and then go to other ones very quickly. But if it's a really heavy storm, and you're getting a lot of snow, this is where we're gonna be concentrating and not going to other subdivision streets until we've got these, uh, plowed open.
Nathan just told me that this would be on the website, so if it was a bad storm, you could actually look at this and, and see what would be the safest route if you had to go to the doctor, grocery store, or whatever.
I was just gonna say, are these, uh, routes going to be marked so that people might know what the priority routes are?
Yes, uh, today, our snow routes are marked with a sign that has a little snowflake on it, and, uh, says "snow route", and it would be our intention to add some signs to these routes as well, so people would be aware that there's snow routes.
Roger, have a question, would there be additional equipment needed for these?
No, our, our twenty-four trucks, we feel are, are adequate to handle this, uh, and this is somewhat how we're operating now, because when they go out to their area, they get the most important route in that area first.
Okay. Any other questions for, uh, Roger on the, uh, substitute bill 139? Okay, moving on, we have first reading of Bill, uh, 2012-140.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by revising the downtown parking accommodation program.
Mr. Schwartz?
This is a bill to, uh, allow downtown residential parking. This is something that, uh, in the past, the city council has looked at this, and Bill is not forwarding, would you forward for me? Here's a little bit of history of, uh, the downtown residential parking. It started in the fall of two thousand and eight, where the city administrator began issuing the Zone 99 permits under a pilot program. That pilot program was never authorized by the council, and then in the summer and fall of two thousand and eleven, there were various meetings held, and the council had discussion about an attempt to develop an ordinance that would permanently, uh, put this in ordinance, but those efforts were unsuccessful at that time. Uh, then in October of eleven, the final Zone 99 permits were issued. Then in January of twelve, we actually did come to the council and obtained approval for parking accommodation program that, uh, is for the Wyomore Apartments, that's in the area of, uh, McCarty and Washington Streets. That is working very well today, and, and is very successful. And then in November of two thousand and twelve, the current Zone 99 parking permits that are out there did expire, so. This is a picture showing where the, uh, parking is available for the Wyomore Apartments. Uh, it's the on-street parking in the, uh, McCarty and Washington area. Go to the next one, Bill. Again. And what we would propose to do is add two more zones, this would be the High Street West Zone. So anyone in an apartment, uh, on High Street west of Madison could park at a meter or in a couple of our lots, uh, either Lot One or Lot Eight, and, uh, be legal if you lived in an apartment in this zone. And then we're also proposing another zone, which is, we're calling the Downtown Central Zone. So if you lived east of Madison Street on, on High in an apartment, you could park in a zone on, in this area, which would include Lots Two, Lot Three, and Lot Ten. This one has about a hundred and fifty spaces available for parking in it today. Uh, the other one was just a little over a hundred. We tried to get enough area that there would be plenty of selection, but also restricted enough so that, uh, they couldn't just park anywhere in downtown, but had to park, uh, near where their actual apartments were. Uh, there are times that the parking is not available because of events going on downtown, so we also looked at an overflow zone. So the next slide, uh, shows an area down on McCarty, Madison, and Monroe, in the four hundred blocks down there, that, uh, would allow overflow parking, uh, if it's not available in the downtown area. Now, some of the things that, uh, uh, were concerning of folks when we talked to them was would the residents park in front of businesses for long periods of time? Uh, so we did include some language in the bill that, uh, uh, would encourage them not to do that, and if they did it and continued to do it, that that would be a, a way of revoking their permit. Also, the price, uh, we have recommended that the price for this downtown parking permit be the same as Wyomore at twenty dollars per month, if you're parking in one of the two High Street zones, or if you're in the overflow zone, uh, the price would be ten dollars per month. So... Trying to think, what else do I need? I guess with that, I'll stop and see what questions you may have.